All right, let's go ahead and take the roll. We have Kimberly Richardson sitting in for the city clerk this evening. So Kimberly, nice to have you to my left if you will take the roll, please.
Alderman Lawson?
Yeah.
Alderman Simmons was here, she stepped away. Alderman Sufferton?
Here.
Alderman Ravel?
Here.
Alderman Rainey?
Here.
Alderman Fleming?
Here.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Braithwaite? And Alderman Wynn?
Here.
Great, thank you. And I think we do have Alderman Braithwaite, he is on his way into the chambers right now. So welcome, everybody, to the Monday, February 12th, 2018 Evanston City Council. I have a couple announcements at the beginning. The first one is a sad announcement. Our beloved community lost two beautiful souls this past week. One, the 25-year-old son Kyle of Dick and Shelley Peach. And everybody knows Dick and Shelley have been incredible community members here. The second was a 20-year-old ETHS graduate, Yaki Sumark, who was a homicide victim on Thursday evening, the night of the snowstorm. I think I speak for all of us at the dais that our thoughts and our prayers are with the Peach family, the Sumark family, and all the other families in our city that have heartache and struggle. So, let's just take a moment of silence if people would. Well, from that heavy topic, we'll move on to snow, something else that was pretty heavy around here over the last several days. I just wanted to thank everybody, starting with our Public Works Department, who worked really, really hard. We have Dave Stone back here, who's filling in for our city manager today, Wally Bobkowitz, who couldn't be here. Dave, really, thank you very much for your entire team and the effort that they're doing. It's not easy to remove up to, what do we have, 15 inches?
That is correct.
Fifteen inches of snow, which we don't see as frequently as we used to in the past. So, the effort still continues. I'd ask everybody out there in Evanston that, you know, if you haven't cleared your sidewalks, they should be cleared by now, so please get out there and clear them. But also, if you want to help a neighbor clear snow, we're encouraging that. We do have a volunteer program. You can call 311 to sign up and participate in that, and we have different areas of the city that still need some help there. So, that's snow. And then the last one is an issue that we had this weekend. It wasn't our finest day on Saturday when we had camp registration. And camp registration, for everyone that is a parent, and maybe your kids are grown, but maybe you're in the midst of signing kids up for camp, like some of the people up at this dais, can be a stressful, a stressful time, because you want to try and get certain classes or programs for your kids, and oftentimes, there's more demand than there are certain programs. And we did have an issue on Saturday, and I was on the phone with our Parks Director, Lawrence Hemingway, and with our city manager, Wally Bobkowitz, several times on Saturday. And in the course of those conversations, Lawrence suggested, and I agreed, that it would be good for him to come to the city council. And just give us some background, because I know it's something that many of the council members heard from constituents on this week. And I know there are many people watching tonight, or want to watch the video, to understand what the background is. So Lawrence, if you'd come on up, and I know you've got Luke Stowe with you, who's our -- is it Chief Technology or Chief Information Officer? So Luke Stowe is the Chief Information Officer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Lawrence Hemingway, Director of Parks and Rec and Community Services. I have with me our Chief Information Officer, Luke Stowe. And I'm going to stick to what got us to Saturday and our actions on Saturday, and I'll leave the technical side to Luke and his expertise. For many of you, you know, camp, the department has gone through, over time, several different models in terms of registering for camp. Our most recent model was a lottery system. That lottery system came with quite a bit of its own issues. When I arrived over two years ago, walking into the camp registration season, that was one of the first things I was, had to address. I heard there was issues of transparency, the same people gets into the same camps all the time. I try to go to this camp every single year, and I could never get in, but my neighbor gets in all the time, and it's supposed to be a lottery, so why isn't there different people? I heard that quite a bit. The lottery also created, was very staff-intensive in terms of, once someone registers for the lottery, they were registered for several classes, and then, once the lottery was held, you might have got in two of your options, but not all four of your options. And so, staff then had to go back and try to balance and figure out how to make the rest of your camp scheduling season work. It was very staff-intensive, and lots of families didn't find out what camp their children would be finally registering in, or their final summer schedule, until sometimes mid to late April, or even early May at times. And so, that's just a very, from a timing perspective, it just didn't work. So, we went to a, in 2017, last year, we went to a first-serve, first-come system, which we believe was fair. We had an online system, as well as an in-person system for individuals who didn't have technology at home. We set aside a percentage of our classes to be available for those who don't have technology, so percentage of every single class, so that people will have a very fair and equitable chance to register for camp. In 2017, our online system worked. We had our online registration. The challenges that we faced last year was, if you didn't register, have your personal account verified 24 hours before we did the camp registration, if you signed on that Saturday morning, you wouldn't be able to log in, or you wouldn't be able to register for classes, because we have to verify you were an Evanston resident. And so, the individuals last year that we dealt with at camp registration were those who had challenges trying to log into their system, but people who didn't register, pre-register with us, or their account wasn't verified. Folks were able to log in online, they were able to select the camp courses they had, and some people came in last year, besides those who wasn't pre-registered, who ran into a problem, some people were able to get two of the camps they wanted, but not the other camp they wanted. And so, those individuals kind of came into our building, you know, last year. Last year, we had 200, over 200 people, about 210 people, come physically into, we were at Robert Crown last year, in 2017. So, we saw about 210 people in person in 2017. So, learning from 2017, what we realized was, we needed to over-communicate and communicate to the residents that you need to make sure you have your personal account verified, and that that way, when you go online Saturday morning, you won't have an issue. You'll be able to get in and register. Well, come this past Saturday, that didn't take place. We had a technology issue where the system crashed. And so, the residents' reactions was, they couldn't get in to the system at all to do any type of registration, so people began to just come to the Levy Center. And at about 8:00, when we went live, we had about 58 people in the building. By 9:15, or 10 minutes after 9:00, we had over 300 people in the building, and they were coming in the building by the dozens, every minute. And so, I was in communication with the mayor, I was in communication with the city manager. We even talked about, I asked, did he want me to call it, and we tried to just hit the reset button. But at that point, I'm looking at close to 400 people in the building, and the recommendation was, you can't turn those individuals away. And so, the best thing to do at that point, we were also simultaneously, IT guys are on the phone with the IT, the city's IT people, trying to figure out what's going wrong. And people are steadily, and when I tell you by the dozens, they were coming in by the dozens. And so, I made the decision to just shut the online system down, because we couldn't figure it out. And we were looking at almost 500 people in the Levy Center. And so, what we decided to do was, as you came in the Levy Center, you received a number, because that's when we do the actual registration of the folks that are there, it's in numerical order, first come, first served. And so, we were, you know, passing out numbers, we're in the 500s, and so, instead of, now people are dropping what they're doing Saturday morning, because the online system isn't working. And so, we decide, instead of keeping people there all day, collect the forms in numerical order. And when we collect the forms in numerical order, my staff, we will process them in numerical order. We asked them for a form of payment, we asked them, you know, for credit card information, we secured it, nobody had it but staff. And so, a lot of folks did that. Of course, people weren't happy that the online system wasn't working, but we didn't anticipate, or we didn't anticipate having that as an issue. Last year, it wasn't an issue for us. So, there was no reason for us to anticipate the online system not working this year in 2018. And, you know, so we collected the forms. By the end of the day, there were 748 people who came through the Levy Center to register their people for summer camp. Now, I got some, I have some statistics, so I'm able to report to you now. We have processed all 748 of those applications. We have a total of 9,715 camp slots. As of today, at this moment, there are only 2,104 of those slots filled. So, that's a 22%. There are 78% vacancy of all of our summer camps. And there is, every single camp has openings. And so, what the decision we made Saturday was, we will collect these, we will process these on a first-come, first-served basis, and then, we will get with our IT staff to figure out the online system, and we will go back and offer again a second opportunity to get the online system correct. And so, at this point, we had talked about getting it done, offering that come Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. to go live with an online registration for people, but we realized that's not the most convenient, some people are at work. And so, we are going to ask to delay that till this coming Saturday at 8:00 a.m. With, and that this gives our IT staff, the IT staff, time to, again, retest the system, to ensure that we have everything in place that could handle the volume. Capacity wasn't an issue for us, and so, we were caught off-guard that the system didn't handle the capacity, because it wasn't an issue in 2017. But I believe, with the amount of available spaces, there are spaces still available in every single camp right now, and they will still be there when we go live this Saturday. So, you know, it was unfortunate, but it was the best of a bad situation that we could do, to try to get through, you know, how things evolved to us on Saturday. I do, I'm still, and I'm, I still believe, moving forward, that a, the online system is the best way to go in the future. It is, you know, we have the technology, we just got to make sure that the technology works for us in the future. And so, we got through Saturday, like I said, we processed all the applications now, and hopefully, you know, we can get this thing right this coming Saturday, when we go live again. So, I'll let Luke talk a little bit about the technical side.
Thank you, Lawrence. Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, members of city council. I have a one-page technical summary that I'll try and be brief, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. As Lawrence referenced, the summer camp registrations were confined to the web registrations. The actual in-person terminals, we had eight terminals set up at Levy Center, those were actually working correctly throughout the morning. After initial internal reviews and discussions with our RecTrack, RecTrack is the software that we use with the vendor, we identified some likely contributing factors in our next action steps ahead of the upcoming web registration. One of the likely factors was, from what our logs are showing, about, there were about 500 or 600 users in the 8:00 hour, which is pretty heavy, considering last year, we only had about 102 people that registered via the web. As Lawrence mentioned, we did not experience any technical issues last year. We already have provided the vendor with our server logs, so they can review them, identify any issues, and also offer recommendations. Their initial recommendations, late this afternoon, were to increase the CPUs, or basically the processing power, and also to increase the timeout settings. Essentially, longer timeout settings will allow greater opportunities for it to process the users, in case there's a delay due to the volume. So, we're going to substantially increase the CPU capacity, provide the RecTrack servers with a full host, which is equivalent to basically 20% of our data center capacity, so we'll take that off the table as an issue. We're also going to adjust the timeout sessions per the vendor's recommendations. We will work with Parks and Rec staff this week to do a full stress test. We did testing initially, before the last round, but we'll do a full stress test of the RecTrack web servers, and we're also asking for a stress test from a third-party vendor, recommended by the RecTrack vendor. The RecTrack vendor software can be hosted either with the vendor or on-premise. If you host it on-premise, it typically costs about one-fourth what it would cost to host it with the vendors. That's one of the reasons, historically, we've always hosted here in-house. And then, longer-term, we'll work with Lawrence and his staff to identify if there's a better way to host it, whether we do Amazon Web Services or Microsoft Azure, why we would still manage it and reap the cost benefits, but then have the added bonus of the infrastructure of Amazon or Microsoft. So, that's the extent of the, my technical summary. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Luke. So, I would like to just kind of go over for you, members of council, as well as for the public who's watching, this Saturday, February 17th, we would like to go live with online registration only, beginning at 8:00 a.m. The IT staff, because it will be working that day, along with some members of the recreation staff, to ensure that the system is operational. After February 17th, you can go online from that point on. Come Monday, February 19th, we will take walk-ins at all of our community centers. And Monday, the 26th, we will open camp up to the non-Evanstonian, oh, non-Evanston residents. And so, we had to push the timeline back a little bit, but we believe that's the most fair and equitable way to get us through what we experienced this Saturday. I also want to say, there's been a lot of social media posts and comments, you know, we're doing our best to, you know, to take all of the positive criticism in. I would like to ask the public, you know, to please contact the rec board, or come to the rec board meeting this coming Thursday, 7:00 p.m., to share any of your issues, if somebody wants to come in and share some ideas or some suggestions on how we can improve the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence, thank you. Luke, why don't you go stay here, because I'm going to open it up just to any of the council members that have any questions. I just want to say, I think it's really good that you've moved it from Wednesday to Saturday. I think that's more convenient for a larger number of people. And so, thank you for doing that. And I also appreciate you mentioning that you're going to take into consideration lots of comments and feedback, myself, many other people up here have been getting it, I've been forwarding you some, so I appreciate you taking that into consideration. The bottom line is, you know, the city of Evanston ought not add to people's stress, right? And we did on Saturday, and, you know, and it's unfortunate, but we've got to learn from it and make sure that this does not happen, that this does not happen again. So, with that, is there anybody up here that has any questions for Lawrence or Luke? Alderman Fleming?
I have a question. Can you just explain why you're not doing walk-in also on Saturday?
Well, Alderman Fleming, traditionally, we have the walk-in, you know, the walk-in time period was for this past Saturday. Folks who wanted to come in, came in this Saturday. It was the folks who didn't want to come in that ended up coming in to us this Saturday. So, because the folks who were unavailable, there were several calls and complaints that came into the building, where folks were saying, you know, they were out of town, they weren't able to get here, I'm not able to get to the Levy Center, I don't have transportation. I mean, you know, we're trying to give, you know, those individuals a fair opportunity to register online, and then come Monday, we open it up to, you know, everyone again.
And then, can you clarify for the public, for Monday, when it's open for walk-in registration, is that every park center, I mean, every rec center?
Yes, ma'am, that is at every community center, is here at our main office. You can even phone in come Monday as an Evanston resident, and we can take your registration over the phone, starting Monday.
Okay, and can you tell us what the hours are, please?
Our office is open at 8:00 a.m. to, no, I'm sorry, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
But like at Fleetwill, where they're open later?
Oh, yeah. I mean, anytime that the community center is open, but our normal business hours are 8:30 to 5:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Lawrence, you'll also have, you have a page about camp registration on the city's website, correct? And all of this will be laid out on that, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We're going to, I've already, we have the draft ready to go, talk to our community engagement team, and they're going to post it first thing tomorrow morning.
Terrific, terrific. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you very much for getting back to me over the weekend, received the same phone calls and text messages. You hit it, and just because I know that my resident is watching tonight, so she was under the assumption that we had been registering for three years, and you made the clarification, it was two.
Correct.
Two, two years. And then, also, you explained the difference with last year, that there was a pre-registration step. If you can just say it one more time, it will save me having to send another email. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman Braithwaite. The system requires you to have a user account.
That's what, thank you.
Every individual needs their own user account. And last year, we communicated, you needed a user account, but we didn't, we weren't loud enough or clear enough.
Correct.
So, the issues in 2017 dealt with more of individuals who didn't have a user account that had been verified that you are a 60201 or 60202 resident. Those individuals, the day of camp registration, ran into a problem. So, we got, that was the rush we got in 2017. So, this year, learning from that mistake, we made sure, we sent out a separate communication this past Thursday, that was about, make sure that you have your user account verified 24 hours before camp registration on Saturday. So, we did a good job with that. People were getting their user accounts established and verified, the system crashed.
Right. And so, for the last piece, and it could be in an email, I apologize, I just haven't had a chance to get into it. Can you just send, and I'm sure everybody else will benefit, just one brief, small, two-sentence write-up that I can push, whether through Facebook, that says the percentages of availability? So, I think that's important for folks to know.
Sure.
That we still have a bunch of slots of it.
78% vacancy.
Yep.
Right now, in our camp registr, in our camps. Every camp has some vacancy, but overall, there are 78% vacancies still available for the community to register for.
Good point, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Luke, and thank you, Lawrence, for coming here, and, you know, for handling the crisis on the fly. That's what we've got to do, thank you. All right, I'll end with one positive note. There was a wonderful celebration last week at ETHS, where they named the fieldhouse the Willie L. May Fieldhouse. Alderman Braithwaite was at the event, I was there, and it was a pretty wonderful occasion. It's not often that you're in a place where there were like, I think there were like three or four Olympians that were there. And there was one guy up there that got up and gave a speech, who competed against Willie May, who was probably in his 70s, and I turned to Peter and I said, "Yeah, I think that guy gets to beat me in a race right now." I mean, this guy was incredibly fit. So, anyway, pretty amazing things continue to happen here in this wonderful city. I mentioned, tonight, we have our Director of Public Works, Dave Stoneback, filling in for Wally Bobkowitz, who couldn't be here. Do we have any city manager announcements tonight?
No announcements tonight.
Okay, thank you. I presume, Kimberly, we don't have any clerk announcements, unless the clerk gave you any? Okay, terrific. All right, so we're going to move on then to public comment. Do we have a list? I don't have it up here. Thank you, Chief. Excellent, all right, thank you, Chief Eddington. All right, it looks like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, it looks like we have about nine folks signed up for public comment, so I think everybody knows the rules. We allot 45 minutes, up to three minutes per person, so tonight, we'll have enough for three minutes, if you need it. If somebody came up and said the same thing you're about to say, you're welcome to pass. And I just ask that you continue to be respectful and civil here in the city council chambers. So, with that, I'll rattle off the first three. And again, as always, I apologize if I mispronounce your name. The first one, I can't, I can't make out, maybe it's Virginia? Is it Virginia Beatty? Yeah, yeah.
Virginia Beatty?
Yes, Virginia, come on up. We got Virginia, then we're going to have Mike Vasilko, and then Janad Rizki.
My name is Virginia Beatty, and I live at 1509 Forest Avenue in Evanston, and I come occasionally to city council meetings. And tonight, I'd like to talk about our improving, our economic footprint here in Evanston. That's something that's always of concern to city council meetings, and I thought, well, maybe we could do something to increase Evanston's image as a destination community. And a destination community is a place where people go to see things and find out things or do things, or eat, or sleep, and that sort of, and the more time you can get them to spend in your community, the better it is economically for the footprint. It shines when it's well cared for. So, what I was thinking was, what could we work on that would be inexpensive? We don't want to say cheap, because Evanston's never cheap, but inexpensive and could involve a lot of people. So, we are now in the time of the beginning of the 18th and 19th Amendment being considered 100 years ago, so we have lots of conversation about that. And we have a community that has had, in its history, a fantastic number of women. And in addition to that, they've shared their thinking all over the world. So, what I would like to have you all think about, and what I was doing to you now is not very together, but it's just things that came into my mind, that perhaps, a park, a women's park. We don't have parks for well-known women in Evanston, and there have been a number of them. And where would that go? And I thought, well, since it's the 18th and 19th Amendment, why not have it up in the north and most corner of Centennial Park? And since there's no Centennial family in town, no one would be offended if you took a couple of acres. And that would be at the exit of Northwestern University, and right next to their fantastic new business information parking center, so that people could get up to the north end, if they come from Sheridan Road East, or Sheridan Road North, or whatever. Anyway, what we could do there, and this is relatively inexpensive, is to get pavers with the names of famous women on it, and perhaps their dates. And everybody would be permitted to purchase one or more. There'd have to be rules set up by council, or the appropriate people, forgetting the names. And then, people could go and meet. the names. And then people could go and meet there and talk, and maybe have a place to burn, oh, I was gonna say, burn hamburgers. No, that would not be a good idea. But get together, at least learn the names. And then they could go over to the public library, or the historical society, pardon me, History Center, or other places, or maybe even some economically alert people in town would make up a whole bunch of little cards with the women's pictures on them, and a little information on the fact that they were fantastic author of wonderful Women's Health book, which was then translated by Tolstoy's people into Russian, because he thought it was so fantastic. And then the city of Evanston took her to court because it was indecent. So we have some very interesting history, and some of it straight good stuff. And we have had, how many communities have had a group of, well, like California widows who went out and took care of Evanston, all their husbands went out to California? Or how many communities you know of in the United States, or anywhere else in the world, that have had three women mayors in a row, and all of them very good, because they're all re-elected? And also, women with such sense to know that it's time to have a man permitted to run again, and you notice that no woman applied. Everybody's group thing. So if we had a park with the names of people on it, we could learn the names, and maybe remember the names, and go places, and then different groups could sell little cards or whatever, to make more money using the names of these fantastic people.
Thank you, Virginia. We're way over our three minutes.
Pardon?
We're over. I need you, we need to finish this up. Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to share with you that space in Centennial Park, and Northwestern University, and the people of Evanston meeting there and having a good time, and learning the names of a lot of the very famous individuals in Evanston who made a big difference. Thank you very much.
Terrific. Thank you for coming up to the podium with an idea. I appreciate it. All right, Mike, we've got Mike Vasilko, then Janad Rizki, then Darlene Cannon.
Just briefly, and she could have all the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mike.
I sent an email, I'm not gonna repeat all of it, but I did want to reinforce that I did ask Alderman Sufferton to put a hold on the Item A 3.5, the Howard Street Award of the Contractors Contract, until the next council meeting. Doing that so that you, to be a little more prudent about looking carefully at that bid. It seems to be an extremely low bid compared to all the other bids, which means there's probably gonna be significant change orders. But one thing the council doesn't have, is you don't have an accounting of what's been put against the project budget to date. And that's something I've been asking for, for a long time. I haven't received it. So just a simple accounting, so the council knows how much money is left, so they know how much money can be spent on change orders, and who's gonna pay for those change orders can be determined. The other thing I think is important is, each contractor, when they submit a bid, regardless of who it is, they always include a list of exclusions or clarifications. And the council should see that, because that also will give you some insight as to what's not yet been included in their price. So I'm just asking again to be prudent, and to postpone to the next council meeting on that decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Janad Rizki, then Darlene Cannon, then Doreen Price.
Okay, I agree with Mr. Vasilko. I spoke at P&amp;W about that. I have something else I'll discuss. Tonight, once again, I ask this council to take steps to replace Mr. Bobkowitz. Any council member, Mayor Hagerty, who wants to tell the public Mr. Bobkowitz's performance is acceptable, cannot really be taken seriously. Last year's financial crisis, I believe, is only the beginning. Mr. Bobkowitz, along with senior council members, over the last eight years plus, have destroyed, I believe, the financial solvency of this city. Mr. Bobkowitz's own recent job search, the departure of Chair Mr. Lyons, and now the city attorney leaving, clearly point to the coming crisis here. The insiders know what's coming. The Evanston Roundtable's exposure by Mr. Jones of the city's law department's mismanagement just highlights a very tiny piece of the issues we have here. I believe we must take immediate steps to have an interim city manager. Clearly, finding new qualified staff will not be possible with the current manager in place. No senior-level people are going to come here of quality if the current jobs, for the current jobs, knowing that the city council is not serious about correcting the problems here. Frankly, someone told me it's too expensive to buy Mr. Bobkowitz's contract out at $200,000. Given the millions of dollars of problems that have been created here in the last eight years, this is tiny. Besides replacing Mr. Bobkowitz, Mr. Lyons' position, the city attorney, I believe many of the people Mr. Bobkowitz promoted will need to go. The water department does need a financial person competent to run, competent to run the place. We also need someone brought in with the real skills to run projects here. I believe capital projects are a serious problem, and this can, you can see with the change orders and all the problems we have here. Unfortunately, none of this will happen overnight. It will take at least two years, and this council can't cover this up much longer. What I have said is not a personal vendetta against anyone, but I believe really the management problems we have here that need to be corrected. I have no issues with anybody, really, in that sense. And frankly, I don't believe the city manager is completely responsible for the mess here. The former mayor, Tisto, Ann Rainey, Colleen Burris, Jane Grover, Peter Braithwaite, Don Wilson, Alderman Nguyen, Alderman Holmes, Judy Fisk, all share in what I consider the failure of the city manager, and some a great deal more than others. Mayor Hagerty, let's see what leadership you have to correct this problem here. If you really understand management and these things, let's see what you can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Janad. We've got Darlene Cannon, Doreen Price, and then Ray Friedman.
If it's okay, Darlene would like me to...
Sure. If Darlene is having you go first, that's, that's fine, as long as Doreen, are you okay going?
Hello.
Okay, Doreen, I'll get, I'll get you. Okay, go ahead, Ray.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity once again to share my thoughts and those of the 1300 Pitner Block Club. I can understand the frustration of many Evanston residents over the affordable housing crisis here. I can also hear frustration from city council members with the difficult choices facing them over the housing dilemma, especially when in most cases, council members only have two to three days to review a packet that might be five to 700 pages long. This is not fair for you, or the contractors who deserve the time and consideration to review that particular project. I'm encouraged by the new Inclusionary Housing Subcommittee, and hope that some of the ideas I've heard can be put into use. This brings me to the topic I actually came to address for myself and the 1300 Pitner Block Club. The project proposed at 1305 Pitner slash 2215 Dempster by the Howe Organization at the end of 2016 got their zoning analysis and approval on 2217. The project was brought to the residents at a second ward meeting at the end of April. This project was proposed to us as an affordable housing project for women and children, then as an affordable housing project for Evanston residents. It turns out to be neither of those. In reality, it is a permanent supportive housing building, as is stated on their application. We spoke about this project several times at city council meetings, and DAPR meetings, and HHHRC meeting. Several neighbors spoke at the final DAPR meeting. We reiterated that this is a non-compliant structure. The only response we have received is they can build it as of right. We respectfully disagree, and filed an appeal on 10/24, six days after the final DAPR meeting. Johanna Leonard said we cannot appeal, because we are not the builder. We then filed an amended appeal on 12/3. Both appeals were filed as of right under Evanston Code Ord 6-3-11. We then received a letter from Michelle Massinkup, attorney for Evanston, who also stated, "We cannot appeal, because we are not the builder." Obviously, obviously, we're not appealing this project as a builder. But as clearly stated in our amended appeal dated 12/3, one of the biggest issues is the procedure and data used in determining the as-of-right claim. When we review the original zoning analysis and approval for this Howe project, which was signed off and approved on 22, it was approved as a sixteen-unit, it was approved, I'm sorry, a sixteen-unit Inclusionary Housing building. This is not the case. All other documents show this is a permanent supportive housing building. What type of supportive housing will this be categorized as? What special use permits are required? It also has offices, which also requires special use permits. And parking is required for the offices, and a loading dock with access to this loading dock. This never went through any planning committee, zoning board, or came before city council for approval, except to ask for money. Once again, this is a non-compliant structure, has no valid zoning analysis from the start, and of course, has no final zoning analysis from the final DAPR meeting, which is required in order to get permits. This is a planned development from start to finish, and needs to follow all of the codes and ordinances set forth by city of Evanston. This is not a structure that can be built as of right. Therefore, to ensure that justice be served, we need our appeal to be put on the next city council agenda, and insist that no work be done on this property until the appeal process is complete, and all proper permits are issued for this supportive housing project. Sincerely, 1300 Pitner Block Club.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the extra time.
You bet, you bet. Well, you're representing a whole block, so I give you an extra minute.
Oh.
All right, all right. Next up, let's see, does Darlene Cannon want to go after you, Ray? Okay, come on up.
Sure.
Come on up, Darlene, and then we'll do Doreen.
If it's okay.
I think I have one. Yep, I do. All right, great. Hi, hi, Darlene.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ray.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and City Council. We, the 1300 Block Pitner Club, we are very concerned as to why our appeal, and amended appeal, have not been brought before the city council to review and discuss. We filed our appeal on 10/24/2017, then our amended appeal was filed on 12/3. We did speak with Alderman Nguyen before she went to her, on her vacation to Africa. Alderman Nguyen assured us that she would make sure that the appeal would go before the city council, but did not think it would be done before the end of 2017, because the holidays were upon us. We filed our appeal as stated in Evanston City Code 6311. This appeal was supposed to go from the chair of the Planning and Development Committee, and go directly to the city council. Johanna Leonard and Michelle Massinkup did send letters denying our appeal. The reasons for their denial are totally incorrect, and speak directly to the reason why, why we are appealing this non-compliant structure. We did follow the city of Evanston's ordinance as written, sent letters and emails, and spoke with those in the, in the position to bring this before the city council for review. Please add this item to next city council meeting, as it is our right. Thank you, the 1300 Pitner Block Club. I also wanted to restate what I said at P&amp;D about our concern about the off-campus school being placed in our neighborhood. I understand that many feel it's a good thing, because it will save money, and that neighborhood students would, would be going to school, which means that it'll be predominantly black students in a predominantly black neighborhood. Would this school be appropriately placed in a mixed or white neighborhood? Are there any concerns about the demographics and the possibility of deepening the lines of segregation here in Evanston? And as I've said numerous times before, the neighborhood, the neighbors feel excluded and misled about, about this process from the city. And this is yet one more example of how black neighborhoods are not afforded the same consideration and respect as white neighborhoods in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Darlene. All right, we've got Doreen Price, and then we've got Omar Ansari, and then Betty Esther.
Say it, Michael.
Come on up, Doreen. Come on up, Doreen.
I'd like to do, say yes, whatever she said.
All right, give me one second. Let me just set the, set the, set the clock here.
Okay.
You've got three minutes. All right.
So Doreen Price, and what's, I think I like summarizing, because there's multiple viewpoints that overlap, and the overlap is what fuels everybody in terms of positive discussions. I wanted to compliment what I've seen today, in lieu of some of the things that have been discussed in terms of, of challenges, and maybe things that everybody could be better at. But I saw Alderman Fleming ask very pertinent, relevant, bottom-line questions in terms of costs and expenses. So I, I think we got a live wire there in terms of representing someone who's dedicated to, like, trying to get every detail that's relevant to making a wise decision. Judy Fisk spoke, I liked her way of taking the other side of the council, and, and speaking on behalf of businesses that might be affected by displacement with Northlight. And she spoke with such passion and such clarity, that I told her, I hope she does it again on any, on any forum. And I think that's a good idea for all of you, when you're not involved in any particular thing, but it's near and dear to your heart, or your residents, that, or your constituents, or even just general Evanston. Please speak up like, you know, Citizen, Citizen Fisk did. I think it really encourages us, in terms of the people who feel like they're not being heard, that they have a voice, and there's a common voice in terms of us elderly people, when you're talking about treasuring, treasuring companies that have been around, or small businesses have been around. You treasure the elderly people who have so much wisdom and so much joy to bring to discussions. In terms of Don Wilson, I want to commend him for only two meetings, his Inclusionary Housing, and I say this with no agenda, his Inclusionary Housing meeting was phenomenal. And it showed a willingness, within two meetings, to say, "Hey, we need to learn more, and we're going to have orchestrate a, an advisory committee." That's huge. That's huge! And so if somebody wants to challenge where the people are who are open to change and doing things differently, that's another example. I, I can, I can't say enough. It was, it's excellent. From what I've seen, and what I've heard people say, it's opening up discussions, because part of your style is conversational, even though you're kind of controlling the discussions. You, you kind of involve people in terms of how you say things. And so people can say something at the beginning, and we, I asked that maybe we have 10 minutes at the end, to do some of that kind of bringing people together before they leave, which we don't do at city council. And I know you guys have so much on the agenda, that maybe breaking them up into smaller meetings, or having time at the end, for people like me who feel comfortable, once I absorb some things, to say something relevant that adds to your discussion before you deliberate. Last but not least, I heard...
Yeah, you've got like 10 more seconds.
Housing authority, remember that. I'm sending memos, I'm sending examples out to you, that I found a consultant on Lincoln, who is a, Mayor Hagerty, you'd love him. He's amazing. He's amazing. He's a kind man, generous. His knowledge is phenomenal. He knows about Evanston. Right now, he's in Florida. I'll go there and pick him up for you, if you like. Anyway, I've been meeting good people. So if there's good people, reach out. Be more of you as citizens among the citizenry. And I think some of the problems will soften and go away, because I think it's people not feeling part of the group.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Doreen. I think you made many people up here at this diocese feel really good. So thank, thank you.
You can also get it when you're not.
That's why I think they appreciate it. Let's see, we've got Omar Ansari. Omar, okay. And then we've got Betty Esther, and then the last speaker that signed up is Madeline DeCray.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and City Council. My name is Omar Ansari, 1403 Fowler Avenue, Evanston. Second ward resident for 15 years, and I would like to express my concern about the Howe project on 1305 Pitner. As a resident, it is to my understanding that because of this project, the taxes are remaining higher, but the property value will go down. And as the city council continues to consider and review new developments in Evanston, I hope there is a consideration of equity and diversity for all wards in the city. No one ward should have the bulk of a growing tax base while other neighborhoods get tagged as the nonprofit community service hub. as the nonprofit community service hub. All of Evanston should serve the community and prosper in financial equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Omar. All right, we've got Betty Esther, and then Madeline Decray.
Good evening. I'm going to, I don't know how to put this, but when Alderman Nguyen gave her decision as to why she would not approve the restaurant at 1723 Simpson, the one in the 1700 block of Simpson, and stated that the special use is a privilege. Yes, special use are a privilege, but that privilege that the city gives to people is spelled out, and you say, this is a special use. If you want this here, this is considered a special use, and you have to do this, 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 and this. Nowhere in none of these codes are there anything about people, character, or their lifestyles or whatever. We make it on what is written in the code. I know it's hard for all of us sometimes to keep emotion, feelings out of our judgment, but we need to do that. I know your decision and your things are hard. People voted you in in their ward to follow the things that says, these are the codes and the rules that we have to live by. We live by them, so we expect you to live by them. That decision that was made at the planning committee need to be overturned, and that project should be given its due diligence of discussing it like any other project that comes before this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. All right, and then Madeline Decray.
Madeline Decray here. Good evening, everyone. Good meeting, home folks. Okay, not going to be up here long, I just want to touch on a few things. Human services, three canceled meetings. Why? The last one I heard didn't have anything on the agenda. Why not? The one before that and one before that? I'm trying to find out what happened to B-A-D-Y, son? The people in the community is wondering what happened. That meeting was canceled, and that man and his son didn't get anything solved unless you all solved it, and we don't know anything about it. That's one thing. The next thing, the Board of Ethics. I heard Mr. Risky, did he leave? He mentioned about Wally. I set two complaints out, not the one that I told you all Betty Esther wrote, that I did not sign my name to it, but what I wrote. You all, some of you are insulting my integrity here, my character, and I don't stand for that, okay? Board of Ethics, what are they there for? I put down nine Aldermans here to be checked out. Why did they do something unethical about the way they went on that consent voting? You listened to everyone else, the dogs, the cats, the chickens, the big high rise. Laugh if you want, Mr. Larry, suffering son. I don't, you know, but it's in the past, but it's the truth. People have feelings behind this, guys, and it's not good for you all to do that that way, to treat us that way. And Ms. Rainey, Alderman Rainey, I'm sorry, but I just have to say about that rules committee that you said something on, okay? About you not attending. Well, guess what? I am waiting on the Board of Ethics Executive Committee to tell me why Wally, the lawyer, and Jennifer Lynn was not called on the board. Why were they not there? Just because you all are staff members and Alderman doesn't mean that you out of the place, okay, for the Board of Ethics to cover you all, to see if you're not during something. I don't want to say illegal, but unethical, okay? Check that out. The public wants to know. I'm still waiting on that, by the way, from the Board of Ethics. Michelle Mason Cup. Do I have to put in an FOIA to get it? I'll do it if I have to. Now, let me get that to Robert.
You've got 15 more seconds.
Okay. 15 seconds. All of you were wrong, every last one of you, who was on a committee or whatever. Now, you knew what that young man was doing, okay? And I am appalled, the people here in Evanston, the way they handled that thing with that young man. What example are you all setting for us, anyone? And Alderman Nguyen, I have to call you on the line. You lead, you led this committee here. It was your job for the rest of them to follow, and you knew what was happening. Tell me you didn't. I beg you, and I don't beg nobody, okay? But I'm begging you all to tell me you didn't know what was happening. God darn it, if that man was wrong, then you should have told him from the get-go, okay? Don't frustrate people when they're trying to do things the right way. If he's wrong, he'll pay for it. Now, I read in the paper somewhere where some law department gave him the okay to go ahead. Did they not? Where did that come from? There's no law against that. You all need to answer some of these questions out here.
Thank you, Ms.
Or you won't get voted in again. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope not, anyway.
All right. And as I always say, and genuinely mean, we appreciate all of you that have come out, that speak at Public Comment, that give your thoughts on lots of different things, from ideas to concerns about decisions that the council's making. This is a deliberative body, they will deliberate on the issues before them tonight, and your input matters, so thank you. All right, with that, we are going to move to the rest of the agenda. We have one special order of business, which is a water fund update, so I'm going to turn to the acting city manager for this evening, Mr. Stonebeck.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and council members. Just wanted to give you a quick update on wholesale water sales update, projects that are funded from the water fund, and then an update on our drinking water initiative. Our wholesale water customers are Skokie, Northwest Water Commission, Morton Grove, and Lincolnwood. With Skokie, our contract with them ended on September 30th, 2017. Evanston established a rate of $2.06 a thousand gallons beginning October 1st, 2017. Skokie has only been paying 78 cents per thousand gallons since that time. Evanston has filed a suit in Cook County. We amended our complaint, and Skokie is to respond to that complaint tomorrow, and we're hoping to have the judge have a hearing within 19 days, or, I'm sorry, within a month from that. Skokie's rate at $2.06 is, all of our rates are established on what percentage of the water plant they use, what percentage of the Evanston distribution system they use, and their percentage of O&amp;M costs. So, Skokie uses about 19% of the plant and 19% of the operation cost, but they use a significant amount of our Evanston distribution system, and so our rate includes the cost for all 8-inch and larger, I'm sorry, all 12-inch and larger water mains, and then they pay 52% of those costs, and that's what establishes their rate at $2.06.
So, Dave, just before you move on to the next slide, because I want to make sure everybody that's out here and at home understands, so, Skokie right now is only paying a 78 cents per thousand gallons. There is a lawsuit that's in the works. Ultimately, the judge will determine the price if he agrees with us, and it's 206, that will be retroactive to when that last contract ended. Basically, right now, we are...
That's our understanding, as long as interest in accordance with the Illinois Prompt Payment Act.
Okay. Thank you.
The Northwest Water Commission's contract runs through February 2034. There's annual rate increases on them, again, based on the AWWA methodology. Their rate is only 66 cents. Now, they use approximately 64% of the plant, and they use approximately 64% of the operation and maintenance cost, but they use none of the Evanston distribution system whatsoever, and therefore, they don't get assessed for that. So, that is why their rate is at 66 cents. You know, they're the largest user of the water plant in our O&amp;M costs because they don't use any of our transmission mains. Their rate is much lower.
Which, again, just so people understand, means that they had a very large capital investment that they made to connect to our water plant and bring the water out to the northwest, correct?
That is correct. Morton Grove and Niles has signed a contract with the city, and hopefully, it'll start receiving water maybe by the end of this year, but the early part of next year for sure. They have received favorable bids for their projects totaling about $93 million, all-in between engineering and construction and acquisition of property. They're in line to get about $70 million in IEPA loans at less than 2% interest rate, so they're very anxious to get those loans. One of the major hiccups for them was the location of the booster pump station, which was initially scheduled to be in Skokie. Skokie didn't allow them to do that, so on tonight's agenda, we talk about placing the booster pump station in Evanston, and that will help them solidify their plan and then be in line to get the loans from the IEPA. As soon as they get the IEPA loans, they'll start construction, so construction could easily start within 30 days, both of the booster station and of their major transmission main going from Evanston out to their sites. Their proposed rate is 78 cents a thousand gallons. They basically are about 12.5% of the water plant and 12.5% of the operation and maintenance cost, and they use very few pipelines to get the water out to a delivery port at Emerson and McCormick, and therefore, their rate's 68 cents. So, it's more than...
78, right.
78 cents, more than the Northwest Water Commission, the difference being that portion of the water main system that they use in Evanston, basically. And that 78 cents, Skokie's aware that this is what our rate is, and that's what they decided that they would pay. That 78 cents, though, assumes that there's four utilities taking water from Evanston, including Morton Grove and Niles, where Skokie at this current time, Morton Grove and Niles is not a customer, so that wouldn't even be a realistic rate.
And again, Morton Grove and Niles investing 80, 90 million dollars...
93 million dollars.
93 million dollars in capital infrastructure, okay, to transport, basically, that water out to their communities. Again, when, if I go back to that, you don't go back to it, but on that first slide with Skokie, the situation there is, Skokie uses our water lines, and we transmit the water through our lines to Skokie, correct?
That's correct. They receive water at three locations, up in northwest Evanston, at Emerson and McCormick, and all the way southwest Evanston, Oakton Street and McCormick.
Hence the reason for the proposed $2.06.
That is correct.
Okay.
Lincolnwood, we've had some serious meetings with them. We had one on November 17th to discuss the water supply agreement. They didn't come back with any modifications that they needed. We're meeting tomorrow to talk about some more engineering details. We're hoping that we would have a contract with them by the end of 2018, and that we begin providing them water towards the end of 2019, and we're proposing that their rate would be $1.44 per thousand gallons. They would use about 3.5% of the plant capacity and operation and maintenance costs, but again, because they're going to be receiving water at Oakton and McCormick Boulevard, they use a significant amount of our transmission mains, and that's what raises their cost up to that $1.44 per thousand gallon rate. So, that's the update on our wholesale water sales, talking about projects that are funded from the water fund. The biggest project that we have, and something that's been discussed for a while now, is the Treditt Water Storage that is located in under parking lot, on Northwestern property. That's a major capital cost. We did not get on the IEPA's intended use plan for funding of that project this year. We're almost certain that we'll get the funding in 2019, and so this project, we're in working with Northwestern to finalize a new easement agreement because we're slightly changing the location of the reservoir. Northwestern's been very cooperative in helping us get that done, and we'll bid the project towards the end of this year and then award it contingent upon getting the loan funding in 2019. The laboratory expansion is a project where we want to have a dedicated HVAC system to the lab, and then we want to have a separate little building for our microbiology laboratory so that we don't get any false reads due to the air conditioning system or just from the general activities that take place in the larger lab. The replacement of our 36-inch, 42-inch intake pipe, this is an intake that was initially constructed in 1909. It has seen the end of its useful life. This is a project that we deferred doing any work on for quite a while because we weren't certain who our wholesale water customers would be. That's kind of solidified now, and we know the capacity of the plant won't change, it will be 100,000 gallons, so we can now size this intake appropriately and get it replaced. And so, you can see, that's a large project right there, lots of engineering costs. It will take time to get all the permits to do this work, so we're starting to work on it now and get those permits. The West Filter Plant is another item. There's an agenda on tonight's meeting packet as well about doing a study for the West Filter Plant. We're talking about the filters that were built in 1913 and 1924. They're still in operation, but the concrete structure itself is questionable, its integrity, and just how well those filters operate. Hydraulically is a concern, so the study will help us evaluate whether we should abandon those in place and make improvements to our other 12 filters. Should we replace six of the 12 filters and put in a larger capacity that would meet the other, you know, the original 12? So, all that study's going to take place now, and then we're shown funding to do some work on that later on. We have switchgear problems, there are issues that we have to address, and then every year we do general plant improvements, such as roofing improvements, fire suppression improvements, things like that, and that's what that bottom line is. So, you can see over the next four years, we're up very high between the reservoir project and intake project, and then some of the construction starts winding down, and normally, we are around $3 million to $4 million a year on plant activities, but you can see for the next couple of years, we're up pretty high. On distribution systems, again, Evanston has a very old distribution system with over 50% of our water mains being over 80 years old. This type of water main has a life expectancy of 100 to 125 years, so it's critical that, at least in my eyes, that we try to fund at least a mile and a half of water main replacement a year. That's 1% of our water mains. We have 150 miles. This year, we're up a little bit high in 2018 because in addition to doing our mile and a half of water main, we're also replacing a water main as part of the Sheridan Road project, so that's why we're a little bit higher there. But you can see that to get a million and a half, or one and a half mile of water main in 2019, we estimate that it's going to cost $3.8 million to do that. There's a 30-inch transmission main that leaves the water plant and winds up in downtown Evanston. It's the major supply line to downtown Evanston. It was constructed in 1934. We've had several leaks on that main already, and so we are now looking at a way to rehabilitate that water main. We do believe that we're going to wind up lining the vast majority of that, but there's a section on Emerson Street for one block that the water main's too close to the sewer main, and we have to have it. It was okay when they would put it in, but now you have to be 10 foot away from the sewer, and so we have to relocate that. This is another project to be funded by the IEPA, and we did not get the loan this year, so that project will defer to next year as well. And I'm not going to read through the rest of the connections for our two potential wholesale water customers and other items up there, smaller diameter water main lining. Evanston has started a drinking water lead reduction initiative. Lead continues to be a major topic in the water industry. In January 2017, Illinois Senate Bill 550 enacted... In January 2017, Illinois Senate Bill 550 enacted, that was enacted, place requirements for testing of water in schools, licensed daycares, and put requirements on water suppliers. In addition, in November 2017, the American Waterworks Association, which is the national organization that puts out regulation and guidelines for water suppliers, put out a new standard on replacement and flushing of lead service lines. I want to indicate that the school districts have completed the testing of all their facilities in their schools. They mostly had lower lead concentrations, but in each building, there were some faucets or drinking fountains that had higher lead levels, and they are addressing that. In Evanston, we tested all the drinking water fountains in parks. Last year, we worked on the drinking fountains that had higher than 15 parts per billion lead concentration, and we have all those below one. There's one in Ridgeville that still is high, and we're working with them. This year, we'll be addressing all the drinking fountains that have between 15 and 10 parts per billion and trying to get those reduced. Ultimately, we hope to have all drinking fountains in parks at below five parts per billion. We're working with Facilities Management this year in that a water division person will be going out with them as they start up the drinking fountains to make sure we're doing appropriate flushing, collecting samples, and turning the fountains off until we get the sample results and make sure everything's appropriate before we turn the fountains on. Additionally, we began taking samples from our community centers. We took samples from nine sites at Fleetwood Jordan, and I'm pleased to indicate that all the samples came back at below five parts per billion. And then we took 18 samples from Robert Crown. That's not the entire facility, but it's all the faucets that are around the licensed daycare center in there. Two of those sites, two of the 18, came back above five parts per billion, and Facilities Management and Recreation Department's working on resolving that issue. So this is the main focus for the water treatment now is lead reduction. Just to clarify how the water services work, from the water main in the middle of the street to the shut-off valve in the parkway is the city's responsibility to maintain, and then from the shut-off valve in the parkway into the home where the water meter is, that is considered to be the homeowner's responsibility. When we replace a water main, the city also replaces the portion of the service line from the water main to the shut-off valve. That's called a partial lead service replacement, which is considered to be not a good situation because you can actually increase the lead concentration in the water due to disturbance of the existing lead pipe. Evanston takes several approaches to doing that. We put about an 18-inch section of plastic pipe between the lead and copper, so you don't get dielectric reaction that might cause corrosion of lead pipe. We do a significant amount of advertisement on the proper way of flushing your house water pipes after we've done this work, and so everybody should be aware of that. We have multiple notifications that we put out even when there's a water main shutdown. We have to advise residents that there is interruption to their water service. One of the other requirements of the public act was to make, to have cities make available to all residents what their water service pipe is constructed of, and could you switch to the other slide for me, please? So in Evanston, if you go onto our website and you just Google the word "lead," you'll get to our lead service site, and then from there, there's a link that you can get to this map right here. So in the upper left corner, we typed in 2408 Hastings. This pop-up box came out, and it's indicating that the private side of the water service is lead and that the city-owned portion of the service line is copper, and we know that that copper section was installed in 2016, that it's a 1-inch water service, it's a 1-inch tap. So that information is available for all properties. If you want to just click on a different blue dot for me, we can show them that this comes up. For every property up there, everywhere you see a blue dot, the information's there, and again, you can type in any address that you want in the upper left-hand corner, and it will take you right to that property and pop up that information.
And how does someone find that, again? It's on the city website?
It's on the city's website, and if you search maps, the first interactive map is this map talking about the lead service. So if you go back to the PowerPoint, please. So again, we, Evanston was required to do this based on the Senate Bill 550, so we're in compliance with that. In Evanston, there's approximately 14,600 service pipelines. On the city side of, because we've been replacing the lead with copper on all the water main projects that we've completed over the past 15, 20 years, there's only 56% of that is still lead, but on the homeowner's side or the private side, 92% of it is still lead pipe. So one of the things that council has already done last year, they adopted ordinance, and the city, if we're replacing the water main on a block, we offer all the properties along that block a low, or a loan of $4,800, zero interest. There's a $100 application fee, but, I'm sorry, a one-time $50 application fee, and you repay that loan $100 a month. It shows up on your water bill, which it comes out every two months, so it's $200 on your water bill, and over four years, you would pay us back that $4,800. Unfortunately, last year, we only had one property take us up on that, so you know, we made this out, available to everybody, only one property did it. We will be offering it again to all the properties that will be affected on the 2018 project. The A W W A standard that just recently came out, it's a first edition, and it deals with lead service line replacement and recommendations, is that they suggest that the water supplier provide a point-of-use water pitcher or filter to remove lead. So we are planning to put out more or less a survey to the 101 properties that will be impacted this year as we do our water main replacement and ask the property owners what they like to have a point-of-use water pitcher and two replacement cartridges, and that should provide them safe water for drinking water for nine months after the lead service line is replaced. If all 101 services, property owners were impacting their service to this, it will be a cost of $6,800, so we will fund that out of the water fund. The other recommendation of the A W W A is that for, at least four weeks after the service line's replaced, we should take another sample out there and let the residents know what the lead concentration is. And again, if all 101 services accept the offer to do that, it will cost the city $6,800, I'm sorry, $5,200 to do all the lead sampling. Again, we don't believe that all the properties will want the pitcher or want the lead sampling. For the lead sampling, you have to agree that you're not going to run your water for 15 hours. When you, first thing, when you get up in the morning, you fill up the sample bodily, fill up a second one, you put it outside your house, we come pick it up. We're not sure that all the properties will do that. We assume some will, and that will give us a good representation of...
Good, good. Let's pause. Great, perfect. Okay, we're at the question slide. I've got two lights on. Let's go with Alderman Rainey and then Alderman Fisk.
What I wanted to know was earlier, could you restate the timeframe for the Skokie court decision, and how is that going to happen? Is it going to happen in a judge's chamber? Is it going to be written down and sent to us? Is it going to be in a public setting?
And I'm sorry, I do not have the answers to those. I know that tomorrow, Skokie is to respond to our complaint, and that generally, within four weeks after they respond to the complaint, that the judge has a hearing. I'm not sure if that's in public or not. I don't know the particulars.
And you don't know what kind of court? That going to be in Circuit Court and Chancery Court?
I believe it is Circuit Court, Cook County Circuit Court, yes.
Could you let us know when you find out how that's going to take place?
And Alexandra, do you want to say, because obviously our Office of Legal Counsel's handling that matter. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, absolutely. Alex Mackey, Assistant City Attorney. The Skokie lawsuit is being handled in Chancery Court downtown at the Daily Center, and they are set to answer the complaint tomorrow, and then what happens is we start the discovery process. So we'll exchange discovery with Skokie, and then from there, we may have a pre-trial discussion with the judge or we start depositions, but I think it might be a lengthy process before we get a final determination because discovery does take a while. So we'll keep you up to date as it happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. Dave, how do you, on your map, how are you determining what properties have lead pipes?
Evanston has fairly good records of water services, and so we have a little index card that tells us what the material was when it was installed.
Okay, well, I'm just, I looked, because I love maps, I looked up my two addresses on Sherman Avenue, my old house and my, the house that I'm currently in. In both houses, we replaced our lead lines with copper, and this was over 20 years ago, and they're both listed on here as lead.
And there's a disclaimer when you went in there. We don't necessarily have that information when a private homeowner made that switch. I understand that a permit was probably issued...
Yep.
But the permits come through community development and may not necessarily have been transferred to the water department.
Well, that's a problem.
It is, and then, right now, as we're replacing the water meters, we're replacing about 6,000 water meters of the 14,600 this year and another 6,000 in two years. As the people are in the building replacing the meter, they are getting information for us about what the pipe material is that's coming into the building. So in that case, we would realize at your two properties that it is copper, and we would make that change.
Okay, well, so how can people correct this if they've...
If they see an error, that they can call 311, notify them, they can get all the water department. We'll take the information and make the changes as we're told of them.
And is there any way for homeowners who are new to a property to determine or to get some assurance of what the pipe actually is before they go through the 18-hour, however-long it is, testing process?
They can always call the water department, we'll send a representative out, and we can tell by looking at it.
Okay.
If it's orangeish in color, it's copper.
Right.
If it's a dull gray...
Right.
It's probably lead.
Right, okay.
Great, thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I have an idea. On the water bill, you could say, homeowner, do you have copper pipes or lead pipes? We're taking a survey.
We certainly could do that.
Why couldn't we do that?
As long as there's another choice, I have no idea.
I can't believe, I mean, you said, we know whose pipes are copper and lead, and she says, I looked it up and I have copper, and you said we have lead.
All right, anything else up here for Mr. Stoneback, seeing no lights? Dave, thank you very much. This was a very helpful update. Water is a, it's a major asset of the city of Evanston and something we deal with very seriously, so thank you to you and to Darrell and everybody else that does so much work on that. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Alderman, let's see, we've got APW. Alderman Rainey, if you take us through the minutes and then through APW.
Could you take the minutes off? I'd like to hold those till the clerk is with us. Oh, there are a number of corrections, and he's not here, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to take Amazon credit card activity off and treat it as something just off the consent agenda, okay? So we can move right through this.
Sure.
Okay.
So A22 is off.
And the minutes are going to be off, too. Okay, all right. This is the consent agenda, no, it's not, it's A and P W. The minutes, M1, are off the agenda. Administration Public Works Committee met this evening. The payroll, January 28 through, January 8 through 21, $3,193,000, $3,193,912.48. The bills for 2017 through the 13th of February, $3,359,819.15. F Y 2018 bills through February 13, 2018, $2,973,670.58. Credit card activity, not including Amazon purchases, through December 21, 2017, Bank of America, $159,115.23. BMO, beta testing with new purchasing cards, $2,394.26. For action tonight, Amazon card activity is off the consent agenda and will be addressed later. Fuel purchases for six months from Gas Depot Oil Company, we request your approval, and the amount of $450,000 from Gas Depot Oil Company. The current Northwest Municipal Conference bid winner through July 5, 2018, for all grades and types of fuel that are utilized by city vehicles. The present fuel prices are $2.11 a gallon for 87 octane and $2.40 a gallon for biodiesel. This is for action. City Council approval is requested for tire purchases for the 12 months in fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $75,000 from Wentworth Tire Services, the authorized distributor of tires within the Illinois State Contract Number 7129. The city manager, we're requested to authorize the manager to approve a one-year renewal for tire repair and recap services in the amount of $24,672 with Wentworth Tire Services. This will be the second and final renewal for the contract from January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018. Approval is requested for a one-year contract extension to Global Energy Emergency Products in the amount of $72,300 to provide the required annual inspection and repairs for heavy fire apparatus vehicles assigned to the Evanston Fire Department. This will be the third and final renewal. There is no cost increase from the last renewal. This item 3.5 structures construction, I am sure is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Let's see, city council is requested to authorize city manager to execute a contract for West Filter Plant Study with Corillo Engineers in the amount of $126,033. That is for action. Council is requested to authorize the city manager to execute a renewal of the annual sole source maintenance and support agreement for the term March 1, 2018 through February 28, 2019 with Harris Computer Systems for Harris North Star Utility Billing Software in the amount of $41,289.90. Okay, this is for action. And A 3.8, the council is requested to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the 2018 sewer flow monitoring with A D S Environmental Services in the amount of Let's see, the five-year contract with Great Lakes Recycling did not, it did not get out of committee. It has been rejected and will not be considered this evening. A 3.10, city council approval is requested for the estimated annual user charge for 2018 with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for disposal of sludge generated as part of the water treatment process in the amount of $180,086.68. Four payments of $45,021.67 will be made beginning in February 2018 and ending November 2018. This will be, funding will be from the water fund account. Request is made to authorize... Request is made to authorize city manager to execute an online application and processing contract for oversized and overweight truck permits with Oxcart Permits System LLC. Pending approval of Ordinance 9018, Oxcart will process the applicant's permit, issue such permits after staff review and approval of the application, collect the permit fees and service charges from the applicant, and reimburse the city the fees collected on a monthly basis. That's for action. Revising the street cleaning schedule in 2018 is recommended by the public...
Could you take that off?
Yes, okay, that is. A 3.12, revision of street sweeping schedule is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. City Council is being asked to authorize the manager to execute change order number three for the water treatment plant reliability improvement projects with thinning construction for deduction of $4,531.44 to the current contract amount to account for various minor changes to the work throughout the construction. This change order will decrease the total contract amount from the current contract price of $1,289,721 to $1,285,189.56, and extends the date of final completion to November 17, 2017. Change order number five is off the consent agenda, I believe, is that true? Still want to vote against this? Dumpster Street Beach Office renovation?
I didn't vote against it.
No? Anybody want to vote against this? No? Did we pass this? Okay. Change order number five to the contract with Structures Construction LLC for the Dumpster Street renovation, this is in the amount of $4,830, increasing the overall contract amount to $281,149. There's no time extension here. This is for action. Change order number two to the contract with Smith Group JJR for the Church Street South Pier reconstruction. We're being asked to authorize this change order in the amount of $8,000. This will increase the contract amount to $98,500, and extends the contract deadline by 455 days to March 31, 2019. This is for action. Resolution 98R18 authorizes approval of the execution of the attached memorandum of understanding between the City of Evanston and Morton Grove Niles Water Commission for the construction and operation of intermediate booster pump station located at 2525 Church Street. This is for action. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2R18, releasing certain closed session meeting minutes, and finding that a need still exists for confidentiality as to the remaining This will provide access to information and openness in government through the appropriate release of closed session meetings of the city council. Resolution R6R18 authorizes the appointment of an interim chief financial officer and interim treasurer for the City of Evanston, appointing Ashley King as the interim chief financial officer and interim treasurer. This is for action. Also, the city council adopts Ordinance 19018, adding Ashley King, budget manager and interim chief financial officer and treasurer, and Andrew Villaman, accounting manager, as a depository signature. This is for action, and the committee moved to suspend the rules and take action on this this evening. A8, Ordinance 20018, amending the city code to allow for one-way traffic flow during Woolard School drop-off and pickup hours on Heard Street and Central Park Avenue. For introduction. Ordinance 9018, amending the city code, permits for excessive weight and size. This is for introduction and action this evening. The committee voted to suspend the rules on this. Ordinance 10018, amending the city code to include civil restitution. This is for introduction. Ordinance 23018, staff recommends city council adoption of Ordinance 23018, decreasing the authorized Class D liquor licenses from 51 to 50 for 811 Church Street doing business as Yala Yahala Inn as the businesses close. And we've moved introduction, suspension of the rules, and action. Ordinance 24018, amending the city code to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses for Good To Go located at 711 Howard Street, and the committee moved to introduce, suspend the rules, and take action on this license this evening. Ordinance 26018, amending the city code to increase the number of Class F liquor licenses for Target located at 616 Sherman Avenue. This is for introduction. Ordinance 28018, amending the city code, reducing the speed limit on Ridge Avenue between Howard Street and Emerson from 30 to 25, and authorize the city manager to, one, direct the City of Evanston Police Department to provide targeted enforcement of traffic regulations within Ridge Avenue corridor, and, two, implement split phasing of the traffic signals at the Ridge Lake intersection on a trial basis. Staff further recommends suspension of the rules for introduction and action at this meeting this evening. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move the Administration of Public Works Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, thank you, Alderman Rainey.
You're welcome.
Let's go on, and we'll keep going through the consent agenda. Alderman Nguyen, if you'll take us through Planning and Development.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item P1 is Resolution of 10R18, granting municipal use exemption for public utility. This is the water pump station at 2525 Church Street. This is for action tonight. Item P2 is for introduction, it's the Ordinance 21018, special use permit for a special educational institution.
That's off, that's off.
All right. Item P3 did not advance out of committee, so it is off the agenda. Item P4, Ordinance 13018, granting a special use and major variations for the expansion of a religious institution at 2014 Orington Avenue in the R1 Single Family Residential District. This is for action tonight. That completes the Planning and Development Agenda.
Terrific. Alderman, Alderman Fisk?
I asked the Law Department, and it's all right, left on. Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, thank you, Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Rainey, will you take us through Economic Development?
Yes.
And as well as appointments?
Yes. Economic Development Committee, O1, staff recommends restructuring the storefront modernization program guidelines for fiscal year 2018 to provide a targeted and equitable eligibility tier that would provide 100% funding upfront for facade renovations within the city's neighborhood stabilization program geography. Up to 100,000 in funding is to be provided by the Business District Improvement Fund. That's for action. Second is storefront modernization program application for Lynn May Studio at 525 Kedzie Street. We're recommending approval of financial assistance on a 50/50 cost-sharing basis through the storefront modernization program to Lynn May at 525 Kedzie Street in amount not to exceed $696.66 for improved signage. That's for action. Also, the entrepreneurship support program application of Lashing Out is recommended. This involves licensing up to $2,500 for equipment, workspace, and certifications for Lashing Out. Funding will be from the Economic Development Business Retention Expansion Fund. And then it goes, all right, that is for action. Also tonight, appointments by His Honor, the Mayor, Mental Health Board, Jackie Hames and George Hall. I move approval.
Kimberly, Rich is the new sitting in for the clerk. Could you go ahead and please take the roll on the consent, on the consent agenda?
Yes. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferrin.
Aye.
Alderman Revell.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Can I clarify? I'm sorry. You're just doing APW.
We're doing the consent agenda, everything that we ran through, less what we've taken off.
Aye.
Was that a aye?
That was an aye.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passes nine to nothing. I'm going to take us through the first one and then toss it over. So M1 was the minutes, that has been taken off. Alderman Wilson, did you just want to make a comment on that?
Yeah, there's some revisions that we need to make, and the clerk's not here, so could we just hold those to the next meeting?
Good God.
I move that we hold those to the next meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes will be held to the next meeting. Alderman Braithwaite, did you have a question?
Thank you. I just had a quick question for Alderman Rainey. I didn't have a chance to ask the question. Can you just give me a five-second summary of why A3.9?
Alderman Rainey?
Pardon me?
A3.9, just a five-second summary?
I can hear you.
A3.9.
Oh. The argument that was made by the woman from...
Goodwill.
Goodwill was exactly what I would have said. I didn't know she was coming, I didn't even know who she was.
Yeah.
That it just diminishes all of the contributions that we all make to Goodwill and Salvation Army.
Right.
That they, even, for example, I think Alderman Sufferrin said, "Well, what about when we go through our closet and we have this one sock or two, you know, that doesn't match anything?"
Right.
You know, couldn't we put that kind of thing out? And she said, "Well, if you give it to us, we actually pay people to sort those things out also." And so, it just, it just made no sense. And she talked about the effect her store has had in Dempster Dodge Plaza. I mean, the other day I went there, you couldn't even find a parking space. That has never, ever happened. It was an amazing thing. It's really, the two stores, and Dance Center Evanston, and the pet shop, and, you know, Play It Again Sports, it's just, it's an amazing place.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a wonderful place.
Thank you.
And so, it makes a huge difference. And the guy who came to defend it, it was, it was a hard, it was a hard, he couldn't sell it.
Okay. All right. And so, for those of you that are in the audience and watching from home, that was A3.9, the simple recycling. It did not pass out of committee, and this was just a quick update among the Alderman on that. So let's go ahead, Alderman Rainey, and go through the items that were taken off.
So, Amazon credit, I move approval of Amazon credit card activity for the period ending December 31, 2017, in the amount of $10,571.30.
Ms. Richardson, could you please take the roll?
Yes. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferrin.
Abstained.
Alderman Revell.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
All right. A2.2, Amazon credit card activity, passes the city council on an eight to zero vote with one abstention, Alderman Sufferrin. Alderman Rainey?
A3.5, Contract with Structures Construction LLC for the construction services for the Howard Street Theater in the amount of $1,385,469. I move approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion on A3.5?
I'd like to have a bit of...
Yes, Ms. Alderman Rainey.
You know, there was the usual criticism of this, and I must say that part of the criticism was that it was the low bid, and, you know, there were going to be change orders. And I have to say, if it was the high bid or the middle bid, why don't we pick the low bid? And the challenge here was that tonight, we had, Structures Construction is also doing the Dempster Beach House or Beach Building. And, you know, Laura Biggs told us of the challenges working on that beach building that are just, you know, there's, there's nothing comparable with this building and that building. I mean, we had, we had, we had drawings on the beach building that when they opened up the roof, there were no comparison between the drawings, the as-is drawings, and what they found under the roof. I mean, so, of course, there are going to be changes. And, you know, and certain people in this community have issues with Howard Street projects, and there's, I can't put it any plainer. One of the people who continues to challenge everything that happens on Howard Street bid on projects and did not get them. And there's nothing I can do about that. And there are going to be complaints. In other cases, you know, an Alderman will continue to oppose things on Howard Street, there's nothing I can do. Constituents from that ward are very supportive, but there's, there's nothing that I can do about that. A TIF was created many years ago, over 10 years ago, to support projects like this. This was, Howard Street was the dumping ground for everything. And we all got used to that. And it was, it was good that nothing good happened there. It was sort of the barrier for bad things. "Oh, you know, another shooting on Howard Street, that's okay." You know, "Just keep it down there, you know, just keep it down there." And now that's changing, you know, that's changing. And there is always the struggle with one or two people trying to keep it down. And I will fight to the day I die to keep it up. And, you know, I know there's always going to be one or two people. And there are still some people up north that are going to fight us in the South. And, and I, you know, all I can do is, every now and then, I look back in my past votes, and I see people who say, you know, "This is not going to work. This is going to fail." And I get a certain evil satisfaction when, you know, when Peckish Pig, you know, sets a closing date for buying their building, and seeing Alderman saying, "That's going to fail," or, you know, that this is not going to work, or somebody voted against this funding. But I ask you, please, after all these years, to please, we have the money, we have the TIF, we have one of the most famous architects in, you know, in the United States doing the design, we have the low bid who is for the contractor, who Carol Ross Barney says is a great contractor, they can work with him. Please vote for this. Let's get this theater up and running so Theo Ubiqui can open their fall season, please.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
I am voting for this.
Is there any, is there any...
Your constituents, Tom, love this theater. Vote for it. I don't think the sixth ward doesn't want this theater.
All right, but let's, let's move on. We got some other, we got some other Alderman, though, that want to talk.
I know, I know.
Alderman Rainey, come on. Let's, let's get a conversation going. Alderman Fleming?
All right, just let me clear there. I don't hate Howard Street. I live, I can walk to Howard Street. I was very surprised, I think, coming from that side of the podium to this side, to see the closing of Peckish Pig, and so on and so forth. Because before I understood TIFs, I also thought we were just kind of throwing money that we didn't have. That said, I do represent more than just myself, and I have heard from constituents who are concerned about spending. And so, I will not support it, not because I despise Howard, or I don't want Theo Ubiqui, the theater company, to do well. Or, not that I won't even visit some things on Howard, but I do make a vote based on my constituent base.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Rainey?
You don't understand TIFs. Let me tell you why. This money can't be spent in your ward. The only place, the only place this money can be spent... The only place, the only place this money can be spent is between the 800 block of Howard Street and the 300 block of Howard Street. It can't be spent anyplace else. So, tell your constituents to come down to the 800 block and the 300 block of Howard Street and enjoy what this money is doing. It can't be spent anyplace else.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Okay, seeing no more lights, we had a, we had a move of the motion in a second. Ms. Richardson, could you please take the roll on this?
Yes, sir. Yes, mayor. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
No.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fiss.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Okay. A3.5, the contract with Structures Construction for the construction services for Howard Street Theater passes the city council with a seven to two vote. All right, Alderman Rainey, take us to the next item. Let's see, yeah, the next item, A312. While, while she's doing that, did you have something, Alderman Wilson? Oh, okay.
A312 is the revision of street sweeping schedule. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, Alderman Wilson?
Okay. Residents are kind of exhausted by the moving target on street sweeping, so, that's, that's what I heard, and I understand, you know, staff reasoning for, you know, the efficiencies, but, you know, phasing this, it's, I think it's going to be very confusing, and that's, you know, right out of the box, I heard from residents who were upset about the snow removal and, you know. I use a text alert, right? Because I can't keep track of it, so I use the text alert, it's easy for me, I get the texts, know what to do. But I think a lot of people aren't utilizing that, and I don't think that we should expect every single person in town to do it. So, I just, and I missed the discussion of APW, so I apologize for that, I was trying to listen to some of the things. So, I don't know how that conversation went, but I just know that people are just kind of exhausted by the fact that it keeps changing every couple of years or so.
All right, seeing no more discussion, could you please take the, take the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes. Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Yes.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fiss.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Okay. This is A312, excuse me. All right, so, A312 passes the city council on a six to three vote, and this is the revision of the street sweeping schedule. Okay. All right, thank you, Alderman Rainey, for taking us through those. Alderman Nguyen, could you take us through the PND one that was taken off the agenda? P2?
Yes, P2 is ordinance 21018, special use permit for special education institution public in the I-2 General Industrial Zoning District. This is for introduction. I move introduction.
Second.
Any conversation? Alderman Rainey?
Well, I oppose this solely on the basis of the zoning issue, and has nothing to do with, you know, who's going to be in this school, or what the racial makeup of the neighborhood is, and I will speak more about it when it comes to, you know, for action.
Action? Okay. All right, seeing no, no lights, could you please take the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Yes.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fiss.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
All right, P2, ordinance 21-0-18, special use permit for a special educational institution, passes for introduction, the city council, on a vote of eight to one. Okay. Just so everyone understands, item P3 was, did not pass out of committee. Okay. I think that's all we had, right, on planning and planning and development?
Correct.
Okay. We will move now to call of the wards. Let's see, Alderman Wilson. Okay, Alderman, Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. I'm hoping that all fifth ward residents will attend our ward meeting this Thursday, 7:00 PM here at the Civic Center in room G300. We'll have a special update from Economic Development, including the process to start a business. Thank you.
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Revel.
Yes, thank you. I'm having a Canal Shores update tomorrow evening in the parasol room. Starting at 7:00, we'll have two items of business. One is to discuss a proposed outdoor concert that's going to take place this summer at Canal Shores. The concert organizer is Space, the live music venue, excuse me, on Chicago Avenue. We're going to hear about their plans and have an opportunity to ask questions and raise any concerns people might have. And then, the second item is to have the results of a three-year data gathering and evaluation project that Canal Shores undertook. They, they, a huge undertaking for them. They got a $20,000 matching grant from IDNR's coastal management program, and then they raised the matching funds, which enabled them to hire a environmental consulting firm, and the firm has developed a really comprehensive habitat restoration and land use plan. So, invite everybody to come hear about what PRI found about existing conditions, the areas of the property that are the best candidates for restoration and why, and our recommended strategies for restoration. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Revel. Alderman Rainey?
Who reports?
Alderman Fleming?
Just a reminder, we're having a ninth ward meeting this Saturday, 9:00 AM at the Reba Center at 535 Custard.
Thank you. Alderman Fiss?
No report.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, just on behalf of the second ward residents, Dave, I just want to thank you and the Public Works staff. I don't know if they talked about it, AP&amp;W. It was a lot of snow the last several days, we had to cancel a ward meeting, and you don't really appreciate it unless you have to drive outside of Evanston, and, I mean, I was up at all different hours, and our staff worked very, very hard to get our streets in good driving condition, so if you could please pass along, I appreciate it. We had two outstanding events despite the snow. The mayor talked about the naming of the Field House in honor of Coach Willie May, and I just want to give a special shout-out to Larry Axelrood and all the classmates from ETHS that got behind the effort and for the school board that passed it. And then, I also want to welcome to the ward Pet Supplies Plus. And Alderman Rainey, you talked about the Evanston Plaza, and I think the owners at Valley, along with their management staff, have done an incredible job, and I just want to continue to thank the council for their support. And lastly, I'd like to make a referral to our Economic Development Department. The, I continue to hear from residents and people looking for restaurant space, and I know that it is something that continues to be a very competitive process here at the city, so I would like to ask Paul and his staff to take a very close look at the outlot, and there's the old abandoned Buffet Kitchen, and to get a final answer from the folks at Valley to see if we can do a food incubator there for some of our residents that can't afford to go into a brick-and-mortar but would like to have a storefront presence. And I think, Paul, you gave me the example of United Kitchen as a possibility, so I don't know if you'll have enough time between now and the next economic development, but I would like to bring it to that committee for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen? Okay, terrific. We are not going to have executive session tonight, so that means if I get a motion and a second to adjourn, and everybody agrees, we are done.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to stay here longer? All right, then, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Thank you for those of you at home watching.